Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the February Public Safety Committee meeting to order. I have a motion to accept a minutes for, from February. Thank you, David. Second? Thank you, Sue. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Department reports weights and measures. We have any updates for weights and measures?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Do you have the floor?
Just want to give you a quick update. I am in my new office here in Salem at the sheriff's station, and I do have my new storage shed, and everything's working out great there. I have some numbers. Everything's up from 2020 because I worked more, more days, a lot more days. About 350 scales I tested, 95% were correct. 344 liquid measuring devices, which is gas pumps and fuel oil, 92% correct there, and other 100% correct hanging scales, non-commercial things like that. I did 171 inspections in 2021. I had one complaint, and I took 55 gas samples and five diesel samples. So pretty much everything's good. 95% correct on scales is pretty good, so there we are. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? For Dan? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dan, when you find the one that's incorrect, like at a gas station, what do you do, shut just that one pump down?
It depends if it's in the customer's favor. I tell the, the station that they can fix it if they want to. If it's against the customer, I shut it down and tell them they have to get it fixed.
And then you have to go back and inspect it when they say they have a repair?
Yep. They have to give me a call, and sometimes they'll just recalibrate them on their own, and then I'll have to go and do them again, too, so.
Mr. Haff?
Dan, what was the complaint?
It was a gas station in Cumberland Farms in Hudson Falls. The price on top of the pump was not, was actually getting charged, and I talked to the manager, and she had already called corporate about it. There was some kind of computer glitch, so, and only, I guess, one person noticed and complained. I don't know how long it had been going on for, though.
Oh, this was not a complaint against you. This was something you received a complaint about?
Yep.
Thank you.
No complaints against me.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dan? Seeing none in the room, none online. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that report.
Thank you.
District Attorney, Mr. Jordan. Sir, it's however you want to do this.
You don't have a laptop there, right? No, should I go back there? Oh, no, I don't.
Oh, there you go.
Bring me that up. Oh, I know, when the kids want to FaceTime, they're walking around their apartment, you gotta sit down. I get carsick. When you're on the move, but, yeah. Good afternoon. The first thing is the state announced a, through the, I think it's a COVID recovery fund, an opportunity for domestic violence assistance. It's a very narrow use, unfortunately, but it's, it appears to be monies that could be made available for reimbursement type grants, so I just want permission to be able to request it, so that if we end up in that narrow field of a qualifying victim, we would have access to that money to use. As I understand it so far, we would have to expend the money and then submit a reimbursement to the state. I think it's $95,000 and change.
Sue, you making a motion? Second? Got a second from Dana? Discussion? All who's in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And now that the treasurer walked in, he would be the one, he'd be the gatekeeper, I think, in terms of spending the money and then submitting the request or not spending money. My, our next request is, I understand that we're outside the cycle, but it was, really the circumstances have developed where we have to make that request now to amend our staffing pattern for purposes of adding an assistant district attorney. And as I understand it, I think it's a motion that I would ask from this committee to go to personnel, and I can get into a detailed discussion as to why we need it at this point, but I'll leave that to the preference of the committee. I've spoken with personnel at this point and have completed the form, but I'm happy to go into the whys and where for us.
So could you explain for this committee just a little bit about that? Is it, is it a surge workload or a sustained workload?
So it, it ends up being a little bit of both, but mainly, well, a little bit of surge, but primarily sustained. And what we're finding is with the, the changes in criminal justice that occurred in 2019, which you all have been involved with extensively, that has increased considerably the amount of work that goes into any single case. The amount of, you know, the discovery that used to be entirety on a very small number of cases that were going to trial is now required on every single case at the very earliest Adding to that, when we started with the discovery changes, I think the sheriff's department was the only one with body cameras. We now have body cameras on the state police and body cameras in the village of Cambridge and Greenwich and Whitehall to some extent. Additionally, just in the last couple of months, the Department of Corrections have added video throughout their facilities. That impacts us because we're looking at, when people bring drugs into the facilities, there's now cameras there that are recording that we have to review to turn over, in addition to the potential for cases that will come out of the facility that we traditionally prosecute. And all of that demands body time to, to review. On top of that, what we're seeing is a significant increase in the amount of litigation that goes with every single case. And that just is what it is, right? I mean, that's, we've attempted a lot of different things over the last two years to try to address that, streamline that. That requires a certain amount of cooperation outside of our office, and what we're seeing is that's just not going to happen. And that, again, that's just the way the practice is going, and so with every piece of litigation, every motion adds significantly to the time investment. Some of that is frivolous litigation, and our courts are responding with appropriate decisions, but it's not changing the, the nature of that. There's others that aren't frivolous, but they add to the, the time commitment of the office. One thing we've noticed in the last six months probably is, at every arraignment for a felony, the public defender's office or defense attorney, if they're self-represented, will be filing what's called a request to testify at grand jury. That requires us to provide a date and time for the defendant to appear at grand jury. That requires us to have a person available at grand jury to document whether or not they show up, and as of yet, no one has showed up. But it still requires an investment of time. I think it's probably worth, for the record, if you indulge, just an example of some of the decisions, so that you know it's not just me saying it, out of our courts, counsel is reminded that as an officer of the court, and this is to the defense attorney, he has an ethical duty not to file frivolous motions, nor to make representations to the court, which includes fully disclosing the facts at issue. Counsel is further reminded that failure to abide by the duty is sanctionable. In another court decision, the defense does not cite to us until a legal authority to overturn this well-established legal principle. In a different case, and you know, one of the challenges becomes, and I wish Roger or Dan were here, they could probably attest to this, responding to motions takes time. Responding to frivolous motions generally takes twice as much time, because it's baseless, so you don't have a starting point, and that just, but you can't not respond when it's a rape case, or a child abuse case, or a DWI, you still have to address it for fear of the court perhaps. Well, if we don't respond, we deem statutorily and legally to acquiesce to the motion, so we have an affirmative duty there as well. But we have motions where defense counsel is filing post plea challenges, saying that defense counsel was ineffective because they didn't request hearings, when in fact, the court had granted hearings, it's just the guy pled before the hearings could be conducted. In another case, you have them claiming that prior counsel was ineffective because they didn't challenge a search warrant. There was no search warrant ever issued. So, you know, it's just, those are the types of things that we're seeing increase in abundance, and that list goes on. We're also seeing a significant increase in terms of your, your question at the beginning, which is, is really a good pointed question, in that is it cyclical? Is it seasonal, or is it permanent? And I think what we're seeing over the last couple of years is a significant increase in post plea, post sentence, so the case is closed. We're getting a lot more appeals, and we're getting a lot more what we call 440 motions, which are motions that are filed after the fact to challenge something that occurred or didn't occur at the case. And our law in New York was amended maybe eight, nine years ago to allow an unlimited amount of 440 motions by defense, so they can just keep filing them. And they always go to the court where the person is, or where the, and/or where the person was sentenced, so we get some out of the facility as well. You know, and sort of then, the last, the last two kickers, I would say, is when COVID happened, you know, the discovery changes and, and the law, changes to the laws, all occurred, took effect January 1, 2020. Interestingly, New York City's statistics show an increase in crime had already started to occur December, January, February of that, of January, February of 2020, December of 2019, and then COVID hit and everything shut down. So we had, really, the last two years where we haven't had courts fully functioning. And what we're finding now is courts are reopened, I think we have five trials in the next month, and that backlog, it goes to a little bit of what you said, is it, is it temporary or is it permanent? But that backlog is significant, and I think when we start seeing local court trials, now that they've reduced the separation to three feet, more of our courts can now actually have trials. I think only two were able to get approval to do it beforehand. That's just going to create a tremendous drag on our resources or drain on our resources. And the other thing that just happened was, actually, it's effective today, the legislature passed something called less is more, which deals with parole and changing parole supervision, violations, what have you. How that's going to affect us is, our county court judge approached me last week asking how we were going to handle the hearings that are coming to county court. And the challenge is, if that in fact becomes our responsibility, those hearings for parole violations have to happen within 24 hours of parole, which is a state agency filing the notice of a, what's the right word, Dan? Is it a violation, or do they? In essence, that someone is not complying with the terms of their parole, which means they're out of prison, under supervision, and they're not complying. Well, you know, it's not as though we're going to be called and said, coming up in a day and a half, you're gonna have this hearing. It's going to be, the hearing is set for 10:00 AM this morning, you need to be there, which means we have to accommodate and, and try to meet with a, an outside state agency to figure out what's going on, whether the new arrest, what's the, what are the conditions, what did they violate, what is the facts, and prepare for a hearing, which is going to be occurring not on our schedule. And the problem with that is, as you all know, we cover all of your local courts, and that's just going, that's just one more thing getting added on to the obligation. And, you know, one other sort of closing point, and this is, this one is truly just temporary, hopefully it doesn't happen again, but we have 200-some cases that we're in the process of trying to review and work our way throughout the village of Fort Edward, following a disclosure, or discovery by us, when we were advised by the attorney general's office of some Brady and Gilio information that we never were aware of, and therefore hadn't been turned over to defense counsel for the past two years. So that's something we have to navigate. You know, when we work through that bubble, that would be gone, so that is an example of a temporary, but nonetheless, a, a massive undertaking that we're in the midst of. So I know that's a lot. I tried to not take up too much of your time, so if I went too fast or skip stuff, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hacks?
Just don't take this personally, Tony, but from a procedural process standpoint, sort of kind of gone to bring the changes staffing pattern and budget at budget time so we can do it all at once? You start doing one off now like this, two months into the year, just open up the doors that everybody can come and ask for whatever they all, whenever they all, which has happened in the past and creates chaos. It's very difficult for me to support any changes in the staffing pattern. Give us 3,000 bucks, it's one thing, but we're talking about 120, 125 grand here.
Yes.
From a processing standpoint, that's extremely difficult for me to support. Not you, and I see your point, but in the bigger picture, I, I can't go with it just because of that, unless it's something that's just an emergency, extreme nature, one-off kind of thing. I just want to make my point before you hear me vote now, that's all.
And response, I understand it, I was not, I'm fully aware of that, and, and I have always tried to stay within that. Could not have anticipated the effect of all of these things cumulatively to come to this fold, and so that's why I came forward now. I mean, if I had thought of this certainly in September, October, but I did not fully appreciate how much time we had based on courts not being fully functioning.
And I guess, I guess the bottom line is my county add-on today, most of the problems that you brought up weren't a problem that you started, it's a problem the state started because of the rules and regulations and the process, procedures of law they passed. So if we need help, they got to fund it, but if that kind of funding comes out of our pocket, that's, that's part of the problem.
And that's exactly what we were screaming, and you all were advocating with the Association of Towns and Counties back in 2019, and the state has never funded discovery. And they continue to acknowledge, well, they nod their head, yes, we understand, and do nothing in the budget to address it for you all. And I get it, and, you know, we're, we're, we're the receiving end of this, we have to react. We don't get to control what defense does, or the, you know, what, what our obligations are, so we just try to manage it as best we can. And we don't have a release valve where we can go to 18B or, or others to pick up the slack. I mean, but, supervisor Clary?
We did have this conversation, though, last year, about reviewing the cameras and meeting an extra person, and talking about whether it should be an attorney or whether it shouldn't be an attorney. Am I the only one that remembers this conversation?
We absolutely did, and, and on the body camera piece with the state police, I had hoped that we could do it with a legal assistant. And some of these other things have all grown up out of that, and it, and it, I wish that I had anticipated a couple of the things, but it's that accumulation of challenges. And, and so what we had addressed in our past was, was taking a clerk and making him a legal assistant.
An attorney?
No, not an attorney, because that was the question that I foolishly said, I don't think we need one to do that job. And I, that was, but that was, that was asked by you all, and my answer was, I think we can do it with a legal assistant.
Yeah.
Not an attorney, correct. Yes, Dan?
Did we, was the legal assistance then, that request was granted? Was that added to the staffing pattern last year?
I believe so, yes, but we haven't filled it.
Will you still be looking to fill that if the board allows or approves the new assistant?
Yeah, because unfortunately, the work that, that an attorney, that's still, that reviewing the body camera of state police really is, and, and heeding the advice of both David and Matt, I, we, I know we don't look at the person doing the job, but we have a person in there right now who's a, whose job title isn't legal assistant yet, that is really doing an awesome job at that preliminary review. So that's not really where we need attorney, it's the, it's the legal stuff that has continued to, to grow and expand, so.
Any other questions? In the room? Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, so it's a bigger situation, I think, than we're all looking at right at the moment. The state has done this, it's being done by design, it's gonna bulk up all three departments. It's not just gonna be the district attorney, it'll then be the public defender, it'll be then Roger's office, and we don't have space for any of them. So therefore, I would like to see where we can go with what we got to figure this out, because they're, they're doing it on purpose, they want us to be overwhelmed, they don't, you know, they don't want anybody to have to pay bail, they don't want anybody in jail. I mean, we might as well let it get as chaotic as the state's pushed it, and maybe they'll change their mind. Our pushback should be on changing their rules, because we can't afford to bulk up every division here at the county over and over again. We just did a heck of a nice package for our employees, and we can't expand our employees at the same time. If, if we've got extra money to spend, you already know where that needs to be, it needs to be in our capital plan. We got a million to 2 million a year that should be put in the way in the capital plan, and everybody, well, not everybody, but the majority wanted that out at budget time, we took that out. We haven't gotten an extra million to spend on employees at this juncture. If you've got contracts right now with, well, it's gonna be police officers next year, right at the moment, it's people at the jail, these are gonna cost a lot of money, and we're talking one position at this kind of money. I think we need to see how this plays out. You know, I'm presenting that to the board as a whole, because we're just, as soon as Tony gets bigger, the public defender gets bigger, Roger gets bigger, where's the space? We're already swamped for space. This is gonna be a, a huge burden across the board as these building blocks all go together, and I, so I'm totally opposed, especially out of the realm of the budget right now. Well, you know, I'll do, I'll put whatever in the budget you guys want, but I just think that this is a little bit ludicrous, when this is where the state wants to go, and they're doing it on purpose. Our job's to get the state to change their mind, because what they're doing isn't working, and it hasn't made for a better society here in New York.
Yeah, we're plowing a little bit of ground for the Personnel Committee and the Finance Committee here, and that's, that's okay, but that's, that's why I brought that up, is I thought it was, you got a lot of members here that are members of those other committees as well, and so getting, getting our heads around this problem set is important. Brian, thank you for those comments. I mean, I understand the strategy there, and, and Matt, you, you as well, and I, I know we've been talking about this for a while, but we're not gonna resolve it today. I think what you're looking for is a motion for this committee to, I hate to say this, move the football to the next committee. So I guess to have a motion to move this discussion to personnel.
You know, there's not going to be one, I would like to maybe have the pleasure to at least address Supervisor Campbell's comments.
Yes, I, I.
So, the danger in not, you know, I don't have the luxury of saying, hey, let's see if this thing explodes and see what happens, I mean, we have an obligation to public safety. We, in our office, we don't have a caseload cap, so we have to function with what comes our way. We don't have that release valve that is in place for other departments. And so although I appreciate the concern and hope that the state would put their money where their mouth is, I've testified the last two years to the Senate and Assembly Budget Committee meetings in Albany, and I have said that, those very words, if you truly believe in what this is all about, you ought to put your money where your mouth is. But I'm assuming you've all seen the comments from the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the Assembly, and our own governor that says, no, we're not gonna do anything because we think things are wonderful. Meanwhile, the very communities that this is intended to protect, the, the communities of the less advantaged or disadvantaged, and the people, people are being decimated. So, you know, I get the desire not to deviate from the budget process, and certainly, if I thought I could have supported this, if I had the information to support this in August, I'd have been here in August, but I didn't, and I am now. Ultimately, you know, we are, we respond, you know, I need your money, and you guys have to control that for the county. So what we have are resources and discretion, and so, you know, we'll manage our office accordingly. But I do think it's important to note that if you think that letting public safety in Washington County go, or other counties, is going to somehow move the state legislature, you should see what's happening in New York City, and the violence and the crime, I mean, I drove through Troy Sunday night, and there were two separate shootings. One brother killing his own brother in a random gang violence act. They don't, they're not moved by those realities, so they're not going to be moved, I don't think, by, by ours either. So I, I would, I, I wish that were different, but I, I do think that, you know, I don't get to control the courts, I don't get to control the defense bar, I don't get to control defendants, so I can only manage what happens here, but I mean, I, I certainly understand and I, I respect the position of, we don't want to do it outside the budget process. But I, I would disagree strongly that if we think allowing the system to collapse will somehow move the very people that put this stuff on us in the first place and didn't fund it, I think we're, I think we're mistaken there, because their goal is to have the system collapse, because they think it's working just fine, that an elderly woman is beaten to death with a hammer in the subway in New York City.
Yeah, I, I probably wouldn't have. No, it's all right. I wanted to give Roger a chance to comment. Go ahead, Roger.
I'm not saying this to advocate one way or the other for the timing or the extra people, but I am saying this, one thing we forget is that not only do I represent Washington County every time I go in there, and Tony's people go in there, but we have individual licenses that we put on the line every time we sign a piece of paper, that we swear as attorneys on the individual license that we hold, that we spent close to hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases to obtain, that we are complying with this law, and we have to comply with it. It is not a choice we have. It's not something I can cut a corner on, it's not something, I'm swearing every time I sign a piece of paper, not just as the Washington County attorney, but as Roger Wicks, an attorney himself, with his individual license of number, whatever it is that you put on that sheet of paper, that this is true, accurate, correct, and this is everything I have. And so you're, you're asking people that are overwhelmed and overworked, they're putting their personal livelihoods on the line, they could be disbarred if they do things wrong, and then they won't get a job anywhere, never mind in Washington County. So we have to be careful when we're asking people to take those loads on, and we understand that this is an individual commitment that they're making, as well as a commitment to Washington County, to serve. I just don't want to lose track of that.
Thank you. Mr. Haff?
Tony, you mentioned that you kind of get overwhelmed by the 440s, I think you called them? The, where, is that the right number, the 440?
That, that's the criminal procedure law section that allows post-conviction relief motions to be filed, along with appeals and others.
Does that come from the public defender's office, or from a privately retained attorney?
It will come from what we call 18B attorneys, so those are attorneys from the conflicts office, it will come from the public defender's office, it will come from the defendants themselves, and then they'll get assigned attorneys, or it can come from private attorneys, or we've actually started to see some coming from legal defense funds from around the state, just depending on, on where the individual is, where the individual that's bringing the motion happens to be residing at the time.
So in many cases, we pay that defending attorney to do the 440 to stymie you. We're paying ourselves to hurt ourselves.
Well, I would bet 85, I would, Roger might know, because I think he sees these bills, but I would bet 85. he sees these bills, but I would bet eighty-five percent of our, uh, defendants, or ninety percent of our defendants in this county are represented by eighteen B attorneys or the public defender's office.
Well, the answer is yes.
Oh, correct, that's, I mean, and which, but you know, the person, you know, they, I mean, if the person is, um, of limited means financially, that is a priority that, um, the state has in terms of making sure people are represented, that, that can't otherwise afford it.
All right, so to Brian's question, that if we were to fund this position in your office, a public defender's gonna want it, so if we fund the position for you to respond to four forty, are we then gonna have to fund the public defender to hire another guy to issue you more four forties? It's like a circular firing squad.
Well, you know, I, I can't speak for what the public defender's needs may or may not be, but I mean, that, there's a system already in place that says, and it's funded by, as of right now, by monies from the state that says their caseload is capped at X, whatever that X is, when it goes beyond that, it would leave Mike McQure's office and go to Tom Choffey's office, which is your eighteen B panel, and then that gets assigned to attorneys that are in private practice. My understanding from the budget process over the last couple of years, uh, that is, that's all grant funded as of right now, but Roger or, or Allen will know that better, but I think that's all money out of state funds, you know, the tunes of a couple, two, three million dollars in grants that have gone to pay for those services.
The short answer is yes, you're play, you're paying both sides. And, and in one case.
Taxpayers are paying both sides.
Right, and in one case, you're actually paying three sides, because Tony and I are doing a motion, um, you know, that involves somebody that's in jail, it doesn't, it doesn't involve the public defender's office, because this guy has plenty of time in his hands, so he wrote his own motion, but, um, in some cases, you pay all three sides to do it, to respond to.
And, and very often, on, on cases, especially appeals, but even now in trial matters, we're responding to motions filed by Defense Counsel, and we're filing responses on appeals that are, um, filed by the appellant themselves, so you have multiple filings, but I mean, we, you know, we don't get to pick that, we can't choose which ones we, well, I guess we could, but, you know, at the end of the day, there's, there are victims on the end of all of these, so that's where our, our priority will lie. But, yes, but Supervisor Haff, you're right, I mean, at the end of the day, taxpayers are paying, um, my office's salary, they're paying eighteen B attorneys, and they're paying the county attorney, and they're paying the public defender's office.
Sue, I'd like to go to you next, please.
Okay, um, one question, you know, there, there is a tipping point of whether it's enough work or too much work for one person. And looking at the temporary two-hundred cases of four debtors, that's gonna be four cases a week per year, um, by taking, and we have to do that, right, that's something we're required to do. Um, if we had, uh, legal assistants that would reveal the, um, the, um, body count and the extra, you know, is four debtors something that could be solved, that wouldn't be solved at the county, or court, that's something they can, they can actually go back to, whether justice or, or.
So what will happen is, when, when, when something is discovered under our discovery laws, so we have to provide, there's, there's a couple of things, one, we have to provide it to defense, which we've done, but there's also the, the ethical obligation to go through and make sure that there was nothing, um, in any one of those given cases that would have mandated or likely could have resulted, or should have resulted in a different outcome, had we all known then what we know now. So that's an undertaking, undertaking that I have to, to make, and that's, that's just one of those one-off things that's, if that was it, this, we wouldn't be here today.
That's, that's my question.
Right.
And so that's the tipping point?
No, um, that's just a, by the way, these things happen, and then they just add a further drain. The, the, the tipping point probably was courts reopening and realizing just how big a backlog we had in terms of trials, with the addition of less is more, with the addition of the added litigation that we're seeing. I mean, I, I was talking to a guy who used to be in the DA's office, a couple of years ago, two weekends ago, and I was saying, we used to be able to look at a DWI and know where the case was going, and basically be done with discovery in fifteen minutes. Um, now, it's a four-plus-hour process just to get through the discovery that we can turn over. That's just the way it, the way it is, and that's no one's fault in this room, um, that's just what the law provides, and, you know, the good news is, we did get Roger Woodburn out here, what did we get, a hundred ninety-three thousand from the state, uh, last year, um, as sort of a reimbursement for discovery. Um, we expect it won't be that amount in twenty-two, but there'll be something. Um, so, you know, there is some money that comes, but it's not nearly enough to cover what the county's invested already in discovery. Brian, Brian, you had a comment?
Yeah, well, Dana Haff was right, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy here. You start building one, you build the other, they keep throwing stuff back and forth, and you grow and grow and grow, and unless we're willing to build new buildings here, other than highway barns, there's no, we're gonna, we're gonna come apart at the seams here. There's just no room for these people. I, maybe, have you got room for two or three more people down there, Tony? Because nobody else does, and I, I can't imagine you've got room for many more, if you have room for any. Um, this is just gonna be an expense that is beyond anyone's belief. When they came out with all these, uh, reforms, we knew this was the most expensive thing they'd ever come up with, and they're all done by design, whether it was Horel Henry, whether it's this one here, whether it was raise the age, and they left out all the people that knew anything about how it was gonna work and gonna happen, and did it on their own. And this, the only way to control this is to not let any of them grow.
Well, it's really unfortunate it unfolded the way it did, and we, in the budgetary process, did an adjustment for salaries for the entire county, and I think we would've looked at things differently had we known some of these things coming up, that could cost us two, five, two hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollars just for your department, or, or just for all three departments, four departments. So I think we would've looked at a lot of things differently had we known these type of expenses were coming up. And I, I guess partly ask, is this something that a, a, a part, a, a, a one-time defense could cover for six, seven, eight, nine, ten months to catch it up? Is that an approach where we don't have a, don't have something that cascades in the future?
I looked at that, one, a part-timer wouldn't work because of conflict problems, you know, that was a thing that worked years ago, and it really isn't, if it was, it, it just isn't a, it's not a one-shot deal, and I just don't see, with the increase in the amount of, uh, litigation and work with every single case, I mean, we're at, our volume right now through year-to-date is equivalent to twenty nineteen, year-to-date, um, with exponentially greater burden on every single case, and so that's not going to go away. Um, and twenty nineteen was a pretty significant year in terms of numbers, uh, and to be, you know, within five percent, or six percent, whatever the number is, of that, just tells, and we're just, you know, it, I know the sheriff is on, I mean, our, it, it just, it, that wouldn't work, and, and I get it, and I know I'm outside the, the budget process, and, and I get it, and will, you know, I, I understand the rule you all have, and I understand the challenges you all have, um, I regret not taking that hundred ninety-three thousand reimbursement and saying, give me a body, um, but I didn't, and that is not your responsibility, that is mine, um, and, and we'll manage this, and that's, you know, we'll figure a way out, but it is not going, you know, I don't get to control what happens, right? We, we don't arrest, we don't file motions, we respond. Uh, I will say, we don't create more work for the other side, um, unless actually prosecuting the case is what we consider making more work for the other side. Uh, we respond, you know, we're a responsive group, we respond to what, um, others do, and so we don't have the luxury of saying, I don't wanna be in a position where other municipalities have been, Erie County had to dismiss about a thousand misdemeanor cases in the city of Buffalo, because they couldn't do the discovery. Um, I don't wanna be there, and I know, and Adaga County's had similar experience, New York City was closing five thousand felonies, right, on some rapid reduction system to try to address court closures, you know, I don't wanna be there, uh, but, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid, and I, but I also get that you all have a responsibility as well to, to things other than just criminal justice, so. Yeah, I'd really appreciate the time, I would love to continue the conversation, but if it, if it ends here in committee, then that's the process, and we'll move on from there, but I've probably taken way more time than I should have, thank you, Jim. Thank you. Any more questions for, uh, the DA? Saying none?
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Let me ask for one more chance to have it moved.
Um, Sheriff Burpee, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The only, uh, thing I have on the agenda is the annual report, I'll spare, it's forty-eight pages, so I'll spare you, uh, the reading of all forty-eight pages, but I would like to just, uh, share the screen, um, and just go over, there might be a couple of questions if someone has, and, uh, for the sake of the newer, uh, supervisors, I thought at least, you know, we'll share it on here. We also, um, did individualized annual reports for each town, and they were emailed out today with, uh, statistics related to what's also in here, but for each, uh, individual town. So, uh, the first page is our mission statement, and is followed by, uh, our staffing, patrol staffing, on the next slide. Um, and there is one difference on there, as you know, uh, in response to the Governor's Executive Order, we created the Office of Professional Standards, and, uh, so promoted the lieutenant. Um, and that position was filled, and we're, uh, off and running with that, everything's working well. Uh, next slide is organizational chart and staffing levels, and for Supervisor Half, I checked all my lines and made sure they lined up this time, so, I think they're all aligned. Uh, and then the next is, uh, deals with corrections, and has statistics as far as how many people were booked in, uh, and it, there is no, nothing that's jumping off the page there. Uh, we know that, uh, for a good portion of two thousand twenty-one, the lobby was closed because of COVID, but we still had, uh, fifteen hundred and twenty-five people pass through there, uh, a little less than the year before. Um, the next slide shows inmates that are housed by sex, and those are pretty similar, um, each year, although obviously, as you know, the inmate population has gone down, but seems to have leveled off last year and this year. Um, and then the next slide is, is age, and that's always the same, it's the same, uh, demographic as far as, uh, age that we see, uh, most of the inmates are, the twenty-six to thirty. Uh, the next slide is, uh, overtime staffing, and for the jail, and it's, uh, it was a little under budget, two thousand twenty-one, uh, just less than the previous year. Um, we're back up now, I think, to, uh, what our minimum staffing is, and we have four vacancies beyond that. Um, there's a test that was given, we don't have the results back yet, so we'll be looking at that, uh, when we get that back. Uh, there is a fair amount of still, you know, issues with staffing as far as overtime, people getting stuck, um, so we're trying to work on that, and that's those four extra bodies that are up there. Uh, next slide is the Central Arraignment Park. As you know, the, the supervisors have been here, that that's, uh, our fourth year now, going into the fourth year, we're one of the, we're the second one in the state to do a Central Arraignment Park. Um, it's worked out very well, it's been very efficient, very helpful to all the parties that are involved in an arraignment, uh, the DA, the public defender, um, and, uh, the defendant, and trying to, the judges, trying to get them all assembled at two or three in the morning was difficult, at different townships throughout the county, so the Central Arraignment Park has been very helpful in that. Uh, and the next slide kinda breaks down the, uh, the cap court, and by agency, and you see that we, each year, we kinda lead the way as far as how many people are arrested and brought before the cap court, and then it goes down through the local, uh, police departments, and includes probation. Uh, the next slide just shows which, what times, uh, the cap court is most active, which is in the afternoon shift, which is understandable. Uh, next slide deals with the Food Services Division inside the, the jail kitchen. Um, there was a total, the increase in the inmate meals, there's a decrease in the office for aging meals, that's because some of the, uh, the concrete sites were closed due to COVID, but I believe they've opened back up now, so we expect that number to go back up. Uh, next slide's the Civil Division, those numbers are pretty comparable, um, from the previous year. Of course, the, again, you know, they were down a little bit, uh, because of different things like, uh, the eviction moratorium and things like that, but slowly, I think, things are getting kind of back to, I don't know if I'll say normal, but we're getting back to the same amount of business that we do. Pistol permit, um, transactions within the civil office, uh, we date those back to two thousand thirteen, which, uh, basically was when the Safe Act came in, um, but it's just, uh, interesting that, as you know, each year, if something happens, it could, um, if, within the country or elsewhere, uh, could drive those numbers up. Uh, and then the next is just a breakdown of the fees that were collected and, and where they're collected from within, uh, the civil, or, I'm sorry, the pistol permits, uh, whether it be new, new pistol permits or amendments or anything like that. Uh, next slide's deal with the Patrol Division, and the, uh, Patrol Overtime Staffing, and you can see we're under, we're under budget, uh, last year, year before, year before that, it's been fairly close. Uh, and then the next page is Calls for Service by Township, and those will be, uh, obviously, that's where it starts being included in the individual reports for each of the individual towns. Uh, the calls are always pretty close, you know, around sixteen thousand a year, which are quite a few, quite a few, uh, incidents to be handled by any of the CRSI's. And then we break down on the next slide the crimes by type, and just to give you an idea of what, uh, and those aren't, obviously, those aren't all the different types of crimes that are, that we, uh, deal with, but those are the ones that we deal with the most. Uh, the next slide's an unfortunate slide, it's overdose calls by township, we start tracking that, uh, and we also use an app to, to track those, it's helpful not only to us, but to the other services and people that provide programs for, um, those that are suffering from addiction, and, uh, those numbers I can see are fairly close, uh, from, from the past, and those are broken down by township. Uh, and then as far as the, uh, Executive Order, we started, the Governor's Executive Order two oh three, we started logging some information, such as the next page, which is Arrest by Race, um, and we don't see any numbers that indicate that there's any, uh, issues there. Uh, juvenile arrests on the next screen are, uh, pretty steady from year to year. Thankfully, we don't have a lot of juvenile arrests. Uh, and then the next slide breaks down the arrest, adult arrest by sex, whether it's male or female. And again, these numbers, it's interesting that they, uh, that they go year to year like that. Uh, next slide is two thousand twenty-one traffic enforcement data, and again, this is also a slide that was, uh, new, uh, to this annual report based on the executive order, and, and again, it breaks down, uh, by race and ethnicity identification. Uh, the next is two thousand twenty-one personal injury accidents by township, and obviously, the fewer towns, uh, with more traffic will have more, uh, more accidents. We use this data, we use this data, a little even, a little further, deeper on that, is the location, so, you know, if we see reasons to increase patrols in certain locations based on, uh, personal injury accidents, do more speed enforcement, things like that. Uh, the next slide is property damage accidents, this is pretty similar to the personal injury accidents, and we do the same with that. Uh, Investigations Division activity, um, the Investigation Division's is, is always very busy, it, uh, you know, they do highly technical stuff with very serious cases. Uh, we, unfortunately, every year, we have very serious cases, including homicides and different things like that, that, that the Investigations Division, uh, works on, and not to mention drug work and things like that. So this breaks down the different, uh, types of activity, uh, for two thousand twenty-one. twenty-one. Different specialized units and these are basically units that require specialized training as well. You know, you don't, the deputy doesn't get on these units unless they've been fully trained in the different areas that relate to each one of their tasks. So we have one more. We're going to put on there that's new. It's bicycle patrol. I'm fortunate enough to get a couple of bikes donated to us. And we sent people, I said, we three deputies we sent for training and they'll be available to be used in the spring. We have several walking trails and things like that that we've used the bikes for. And also, if we, once we get the six recruits that we have in the academy out in the summer and we have availability, I'd like to be able to have deputies use the bikes in different towns throughout the county as well, where where there is no police departments. Our next slide is K nine stats for two thousand twenty-one. And those are fairly similar each year. And of course, the K nines are also very valuable to us in our community outreach and especially with children and very helpful in that respect as well. The marine division, their boat, and we have the different lakes and ponds that are listed there. We try to get out as much as we can. We use money, grant money to do that. And then the next slide deals with the joint team that we have with public safety. We're active with actually flying today, an accident scene for the response team with a drone unit. And it's something that's been very helpful to us, not only at accidents, but crime scenes, missing missing people, all different kinds of things. And it's it's actually turned out to be a really good partnership with public safety. Next page is snowmobiles. Unfortunately, we don't seem to get as much snow as we used to, but we did have the snowmobiles out this year a couple of times. And it is a good PR thing as well, where the deputies, again, they have to go through quite extensive training to be a snowmobile operator, but they do operate on the different trails and different parts of the county, meet people that are out on the trails, enjoying the trails, but also the different groups that run all the trails really like that we're out there because they do have issues with damage to signs and things like that. And then the next screen is the emergency response team, which we're kind of like rebuilding right now. So we're in the mode of looking, we have turnover in the agency. We have a lot of new people. This is a highly technical team. So we're soliciting interest and going to require some extra training for some people. Difficult in these circumstances where we have six in the academy. So obviously, we're a little short staff to dedicate to that. The next slide is the community services and it lists a lot of the different programs that we we have available to people within the county. Next slide is our explorers post. We, you know, because of COVID, again, we're limited in how we could meet with the kids, but hopefully, we'll be able to get back in that. Do have a part of a success story. We do have a recent deputy that we just promoted to sergeant. He started as an explorer several years ago when we first started this. So he, not only did he go through the explorer post, we made him a deputy sheriff and now he's been promoted to sergeant. So it's a it's an excellent program. Sheriff's summer camp, we're an active participant in that. We work each year to identify children that are maybe couldn't afford to go to a camp otherwise. And we we send them down. It's in the Finger Lakes and Tiger Lake. And it's a great program. Prom crash stills, prom crash drills is another thing that we do. Sergeant Sullivan is excellent at that. He's been recognized statewide of the things he does for prom crashing. He goes to all the different schools in the county through different years and does that. The next slide just shows some of the photos from some of the community events that we have been attended. We still remain pretty busy on our social media site. We just had our Twitter account verified, which is pretty cool. But we do use Facebook and all the different formats, other than TikTok, by the way, to do a lot of community reach out or outreach, sorry. And we we do have a fair amount of people. Like, we just had a case not too long ago where a suspect was, we had a photo of a suspect from an attempted burglary at a residence. We put it out and within hours, we started getting a lot of information about who that person was, not only from the public, but the person himself called and said, you know, please take that down. I'll turn myself in tomorrow. That's me. So, you know, it does work. It's a very, very good tool for us. And the next slide is just reach or show some of the community outreach that we have, different programs that we have within the office. And again, we're going to, obviously, like we do in the past, we'll, it's in a P drive now, but we'll also list this or put a link to this on the webpage, the sheriff's webpage. The next slide is the school resource officers. We started that almost four years ago now. It's been a very good program. We're very happy with the results of our pro our cooperation with the schools that we enjoy and the fact that we're able to get such good people to be SROs, SPOs within these schools. The Sheriff's Association just started a new program called CPAS and it's an organization that's kind of dedicated to training school resource officers around the state. Our resource officers are members of that CPAS. They just went to training in Saratoga a couple of weeks ago when school was out. And they had some very nationally renowned speakers that were there, some parents for, unfortunately, that were had kids killed in school shootings and some very high profile cases from around the country. And it's something we take very seriously and we're very proud of our school resource officer program. And we just finished up with some photos from that. So again, I kind of wanted to kind of zip through that for you, but it is available. It will be available on the county webpage. If anybody has any questions at all about what's in the full annual report or the individualized annual reports, feel free to reach out to me and I'd be happy to talk about what's going on in your respective townships. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sheriff Murphy. I received mine for the town of Pudham. I really appreciate that. And it's a very good report. Anybody have questions with the sheriff? Thank you.
Sheriff, on the school resource officers, do they wear body cams?
At this time, they don't.
And the other question is, is with that correctional facility, are they going to open up visitation?
Yeah. So I actually requested the Sheriff's Association do a survey among all the all the offices in the state to see where everyone else is at. And the State Commission of Correction has kind of gotten in on that now. I think very soon we'll be doing that. If the cases continue to go down like they are, I think that we should. So actually kind of initiated that. So we'll get the survey results back. I don't think anyone has. I think that's what my main question is. And then if not, what do we have to do in conjunction with the Commission of Correction to allow visitation?
To allow it to open back up? Is that what that?
Right.
Do you have like a like a goal in mind?
No, I mean, I want to be cautious. You know, I understand the need and the reasons why, you know, we should do it. And I think that, you know, the inmate should have that availability to them to visit with their family. But I also don't want to, you know, jump into it without making sure we're doing it the right way and and with the approval, first of all, the Commission of Correction. And then if they're going to set some guidelines that are that might be like some type of barrier or whatever kind of sanitation guidelines. But the good news is it's in the talking process now. The bad news is the state. So it might take a while, but hopefully, we'll get an answer pretty soon.
The state's correctional facilities have been open right along. So if a lot of your streets are open too?
Yep. Yeah, the State Commission of Correction doesn't oversee the state facilities, believe it or not. They oversee the jails. So they they're the ones that we have to report to and they're the oversight committee. So we wouldn't be able to do it without them saying yes. So that's kind of why we're asking, you know, hey, is anybody else considering this? If you are considering it, where are you at in the process and what are you doing to open a jail? That's the first step. And then the second step is getting approval from the Commission of Corrections to do it. But I know State Corrections has been doing it. But again, they're they're not overs, the oversight from for our jail is the State Commission of Correction.
Thank you.
Elijah Hanky.
You have newly created the Office of Public Standards, or Professional Standards, with staff with lieutenant. How many investigations have you had in there, you know, in the past year? They they don't say that report is a statistic. Do you keep any numbers on it?
Yeah, the so that position is not just for like internal investigations, which, to answer your question, is zero as far as like an official internal investigation into officer misconduct. So there's but there's several different things that that position is responsible for. One of them, one of the things is training. Another thing is use of force. So all the use of force reports, they come through, they're all reviewed, review of body camera footage. You know, there's several different things within that lieutenant's position that relate to professional standards. So but that's a good point. And I think it's something that we could add in the future. Literally only been in place a few months now. And we did, we did purchase some software. It's very helpful. That's outside of our records management system. It's just related to professional standards, policies, procedures, use of force, disciplinary issues, anything like that. So, you know, we're looking forward to that. It's going to be very helpful for us, but it's really kind of in infancy right now. So I would assume that next year, we would have a slide dedicated to that.
Thank you.
Sheriff, the central arraignment, when we first started doing that, it was to help mitigate cost of people traveling all over to the different towns during during the after hours portion of the day. Would we save more money if all the arraishments were done at the county? Because during the workday, you still have to travel all over.
Oh, there's there's still be done during the day. The arraignment's are two different times. One's in the morning and one's in the evening. So we do, if they don't fall into the, if they haven't been here all night and arraigned in the morning, then they're they're arraigned in the afternoon or evening hours. So it is helped, you know, that all arraignment's hard being held here. Unless, you know, maybe the DA can ask that question, but unless there's someone arrested and there's court in session in some town that, you know, you can arraign them there. But but yeah, it's it's twice a day. So it does cover.
So there's very few arraishments in towns now?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Sheriff Murphy, as always, a pleasure. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Public safety, sir.
Good afternoon. Our one item is the annual approval of the comprehensive emergency management plan for the county, which was distributed electronically. We've also made some hard copies as requested. The biggest part of the updates is just updating some contact information.
Yes, correct. And I've had a chance to look at that. Are there any questions regarding the emergency plan? Motion to accept? Mr. Hogan, seconded by Clary, Mr. O'Brien. Discussion? Clary.
I went to print it and it was a hundred and eighty-six pages long.
Yes, that's why we sent it out electronically.
Still have to print it.
Any other questions, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is some old business, or other business, I should say. We'll call it old, but new to our current situation. And it's really the building access procedures. And I think it encompasses a number of things. I think people want to bring up certain points about access to the building, COVID protocols, where we are right now, not only because every part of the building is a little bit different. It's unfortunately, it's not universal. So with that, I know somebody wanted to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, I think we should put it in the government app.
You want to second that? Mr. Half, what do you think of that motion?
I think Mr. O'Brien raised his hand before me.
I think he was the second on the motion.
Oh. All right, can I? All right, let me raise my hand.
So we're part of the discussion on that motion. Go ahead, Mr. Half.
Nobody seconded that. So we don't can't have discussion yet unless you want me to speak.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien seconded Mr. Hicks's motion.
I'd like to resend. I'd like, can I resend that motion? I'm pretty good at that.
Well, only I can. Dana, the floor is yours. Go ahead, sir.
I'm not there today. I'm in the comfort of my own home, but I understand that the plexiglass dividers and the border supervisors' chambers are gone. I had requested that they be removed, the thermo scan units be removed. I think they are still there. The the sign in, I would like to see all COVID protocols that were enacted underneath the state of emergency, which no longer exists, be removed. I don't think we need any of them. And oddly enough, the last border supervisors' meeting, when we rescinded the mask policy, as I was leaving the building, I walked past the deputy down by entrance B. A woman came in. She had something for leap. She didn't quite know where to go. And as the deputy and myself were trying to tell her how to get behind the thermo scan, put your back up against the wall, this woman was terrified. And you can ask Scott, the deputy. She had no idea what we wanted to do. So when people say those thermo scans are nothing, they are. The public that doesn't know what we are doing does not trust what we're doing, scared of what it is. I don't think we need the thermo scan. And and speaking to the deputy, I asked him, how many people in the last two years did that thermo scan reject for temperature? He said, quite a few, because if you come in from your car and you have your your heater on, your face is hot. So he tells people, go outside for five minutes, come back in. They come in, they've cooled down, they pass. He has only had one person in two years get rejected because of an actual temperature fever. So I think we need to get rid of these. If you are coming in the A B entrance with your fob and you come in from your car and your heater's on and it and it comes in negative, do you actually go out ten minutes, return, come back in till it's positive? I don't think so. So I would like any of the procedures we have in place due to the state of emergency, I'd like to have those procedures eliminated. That's a motion that I would like to make.
All right. We got, well, let's let's deal with the first motion, I guess.
That can be suspended.
Yeah.
He wants to resend whatever is out there. It'd be interesting to know what that is. Do we have it written down anyplace? Do we know what they are? Or is it, does somebody designate themselves? Is it made up? Is it written down? Did anybody in this room get thermo scans and send in today when they came in the building?
I I stepped in front of it as a, you know, but I came in at eight fifteen. So I I stepped in front of it. It gave me a go and I I just walked by it and signed in.
I always do when I come in.
I step in front of it. Did you sign anything, what they required?
I don't step in front of it or sign it.
Right. Just walk right by it. But I think today's, or to Dana's point, we kind of know that, right? Somebody's popping in the door for the first time. You know, it it's one thing if it was just simply there as a tool to be utilized by those that wanted to use it to just get an understanding of what their state of health was before they came into the building. But the way it's positioned right now, But the way it's positioned right now, you know, I can understand how the argument is that it's a little bit imposing for somebody walking through the entrance.
Daryl?
Yep.
When that woman came in, she had something for leap. The deputy told her if she did not want to come in, she could drop it in the drop box right outside the door. If she wants to come in, she has to go behind the thermo scan.
Right, because I haven't given the deputy any of her instructions, I don't believe.
But yet, somebody else walks right past it, doesn't use it. So it's a tool that's not being utilized. Same rule for everyone. It's capricious. Or arbitrary, I should say.
Yep. Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, we can set different rules. We don't have to have anybody turned away as an optional device that's paid for. According to Matt Jones, there's no operational inefficiency to have it there. And we can certainly instruct our department heads and the sheriff not to require that anybody. Just to the point, we're taking the interpretation of Dana saying that him and a sheriff saw a scared woman. I'll take your word for it, but you would scare me having conversations with me on holiday if I didn't know who you were. That's who you are.
Who's being capricious now?
So anyway, I don't see a reason to remove that. I think they're they're an effective device. We can you don't make somebody sign in. You don't make you don't turn people away because people can have elevated fevers for a number of different reasons. But if somebody does step into it and they decide, hey, you know what, I had an elevated fever, they may turn around and leave because they may not feel well. That could potentially stop the spread of a virus, not necessarily COVID, but anything. I don't I don't see the the concern with what's the downside of having them.
Correct. Jim?
I did some traveling this past week. I ran a ball. We're not checking temperatures. My temperature wasn't checked at the airport. I don't understand why we're checking temperatures of the county building. We're not checking temperatures at the town halls. It's it's I agree with Dana. It's arbitrary. And and if people aren't using it, then then there's the phallus right there, so.
Mr. O'Brien?
There was a good point that I think to see. Courts have their protocol in play. One of the protocols is that people sign in, I believe. And that's been a place for federal and state buildings for quite a while, just to track where people are going. So while I don't think we need a mandatory ability to to either take temperature checks, I think it's a good tool there for people who wish to check themselves by consideration for their for their workmates and and the staff here. I think also that another conversation might be is that should we consider following protocol in other federal and state buildings to have people sign in so we can track where they're going? So in case there is an emergency or something, we can say, hey, listen, George is in the building. Building or should we go searching for him?
Back to Mr. Haff.
Dave, you then have to require people to sign out so that you know that they are no longer there. I recently spoke to Dan Steck, and he told me nobody does this scanning. And he's in the legislature buildings a lot. He says where he goes, nobody does this anymore. I just don't, you know, if you want to put a sign up voluntary temperature scan, you know, if you're curious or not sure, okay. But the impression is when people come in, they have to go there, they have to sign in. If you want to keep them, we already paid them, fine, but put a sign up that it's a option.
Well, I don't I've heard arguments about stopping the mandatory temperature checks when it comes to the building. I've heard anyone arguing against that.
Well, then everybody would agree to my motion. No more needed mandatory. If you want to keep it there, I I don't care. Let's put a little sign on it.
I don't know if we have anybody from public health on here today. Did they join us?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Dana, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Could you comment on our conversation at this point? What is is there validity to mandatory temperature checks at this time? Or could it be used simply as an optional tool?
Yeah, I think from a public health perspective, it can be used as an optional tool for both employees and then other people coming in. You know, the public coming in. As you all know, there's many other symptoms that go along with COVID other than fever. And from the research that I've been doing and some studies that have been done with this new variant that's out there, the Omicron, which is what is the majority of what's happening now. They're finding that fever is is actually not one of the top symptoms with that variant. So just because somebody doesn't have a temperature coming in the building does not necessarily mean that they, you know, they don't have COVID because there's many other symptoms that go along with it. You know, in in, you know, I think as a state and as a as a nation, actually, they're trying to get back to some personal responsibility with this. You know, so if you're sick, you stay home, you know, and try to stay away from other people. So that's that's really where we're headed. So, you know, I I agree that, you know, I I don't think that, you know, having it be a mandatory thing, you know, maybe signs on the door, you know, just to remind people, you know, if you are having any of these symptoms, please do not enter or, you know, something along those lines. You know, we all know how much people pay attention to signs on doors, so you know that, but at least if they're there. So, you know, I agree that, you know, not having it be a mandatory thing is probably not, you know, it's probably just not effective at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Hanky.
I didn't, I don't know whether you got a second for Dana's motion, but his motion was to eliminate all the COVID protocols that are put in place. I think if we do that, he won't be sitting home in the comfort of his own home because the Zoom stuff is one of the protocols that we've put in place. So maybe he ought to, maybe that motion ought to be rephrased a little bit if you're trying to target it because you've you've cast a pretty broad net there. I mean, I don't mind. I just don't see people start coming back in here.
I'm more than happy to amend my motion. Plexiglass dividers, which are gone, but I want to put that in writing. The thermo scans, I want that in writing, and the requirement to sign in in writing. If at some other point, public safety thinks signing in is a safety issue other than a public health issue, then we need to speak about that and address it. So those three items, but maybe in the meantime, till next meeting, the administrator can see what other things are out there because Matt Hicks asked what other things are out there. We might not know, so I think maybe my motion shouldn't be such a broad one. Maybe we can attack this piecemeal on other things that we discover. So my motion would be plexiglass dividers, thermo scans, and sign in. Or mandatory. You want to be voluntary? Fine.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, Dana, don't amend your motion yet. I think there's more to add to it. I have not heard anything discussed. I liked your first motion. I wish you'd left it alone. But I think it should be required that in committee meetings, all the department heads that answer that committee that are supposed to report be in attendance personally at the meeting. And I've addressed this on many committee meetings, that I wish they were all here, and I see no reason why they can't be. I I think it's way more effective and I think the dialogue that is created by that is more educational to us all. So be careful, Dana.
I think the
Keep adding to it. You have got time to get to keep adding to it.
Administrator has authority to tell the department heads to come. I don't think we need a motion for that.
Well, it was the protocols is why. It was all initiated from the protocols. It was for safety.
Not that one.
It was. Everything was done for safety.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, you had your hand up.
That I I guess, Dana, I'm not opposed to it. I think though there might be different rules for the unified court system, which is a different building, but it's still part of the county. And I have no idea if DMV is under state directive outside our jurisdiction. So I'm okay with what you're doing as long as it encompasses what we have control over. But those two things might be in the control that we can't have jurisdiction over. I don't know that answer. What is the concern?
Yes, I I agree with that. I think there's some other parts of the building that are operating under additional guidance and protocols.
So I I sort of like to attack this a little bit differently. I agree we can get rid of the dividers. I agree we can get rid of the mandatory temperature checks. But I don't think we should restrict departments who choose to use those for specific reasons. They they can't use them. I will agree that I I think I talked to Stephanie. Stephanie said that DMV and the county clerk are under mandate from state. I don't know what their status is. This was a few or four weeks ago when I talked to her about that, so I don't know where it is. She should be in that conversation. I think it's too early to have a general general conversation. I also think that in terms of making mandatory people come to these meetings, that in terms of if we're still able to use Zoom meetings or Zoom to it, I think that instead of having department heads sit here for an hour to two hours and wait for their turn, I think it's respecting their time and their effort, so we might want to consider some of those things. I'm not saying we don't want to do it, but I think that just throw up our hands and say, let's make everything mandatory to come to these meetings is very premature. I think that if we want to choose to do that, we should sit down and or the the listen to the county and deputy and people who run these meetings and make sure that we are all all prepared and all ready for them. Should sit down and figure these things out before we jump out and make some blanket statements, which I think are likely wrong to make blanket blanket statements when we don't know what could happen tomorrow.
Chairman Hall?
Yeah, I I just I guess I'm a little confused, but I think if if Supervisor Haff was here today, he would see that the dividers have already been taken down. So I don't know why you'd make a motion for something that's already been accomplished. That doesn't make any sense. To me, it doesn't anyways.
Are they in other locations in the building?
Break rooms are not there, no, not in, except over in DMV, which falls under a separate thing supervisor.
Do we know that for a fact, that DMV falls underneath different thing like the thermo scan at DMV? Do we know that for a fact or does the
I'm talking about the dividers. If you heard the county clerk the other day, she told us exactly what she was under. You were on the same meeting I was on and arrested supervisors.
I would like
We can ask her again, but that's
I would like I would like that to be proved to me.
Well, you can talk to Stephanie. She'll give you the the proof.
Stephanie is a county employee at county department in the county building. I think
She's elected official as well.
She would be, her department would be subjected to this motion. She's elected official, but she can't even order a chair without the board of supervisors approving. We, the board of supervisors, run the infrastructure of the building.
We do, but we may have to meet the specifications as we deal with the unified courts. Well, she may have those, and that's what she said the other day when she talked to us, but we can ask her again. Your elected officials are no different than your highway superintendent in your town to make an analogy. You have the power of the purse, but that's it. They run their departments. So demanding their presence, telling them how to run their departments, you don't have, you have no word in that. You have no word with the sheriff, the DA, the county clerk, or the county treasurer. The only power you have over them is the power of the purse, similar in your town to the highway superintendent.
Roger, I I really relish telling you that you are wrong.
Well, I
The public, the public comes in to DMV. The county clerk does not have control over the public standing in front of a thermo scan unless the state requires it.
The county clerk runs her department pursuant to her elected authority.
She does not. So so on her own volition, not a requirement from the state, on her own volition, you're trying to tell me that she can tell the public to stand in front of a thermo scan?
Yes.
That's horrible.
It may be horrible, but it's the way it is.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I got a question for you. You're you want the department head, you want all the supervisors in person as well?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, if they're on that committee, I think they should depend.
Okay, I just want to make sure because the hypocrisy of us requiring suggesting that department heads show up when half of us are here.
That's not my motion.
No, I know, but I wanted to ask you. I wasn't talking to you, Dana.
So is there hypocrisy in that statement?
No, 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 I appreciate what you said.
No, that that was my comment.
But when we're sitting in front of our own homes, telling people we want everything dropped and we want people to show up at these meetings, doesn't feel right, doesn't it, right?
So to scope this back a little bit, I appreciate the conversation. Some of it is kind of going outside the the purview of public safety. So from a public safety perspective, entering the building, and we'll focus on access to, you know, Building B. Building B. What we're advocating for with Mr. Haff's motion is that the temper the temp temperature checks, the thermal scan or whatever you want to reference it, be made optional. We can keep it there, but make it optional for somebody, put the signage there. Perhaps the positioning of it looks like it's more of a barrier to entry than an option to use the way it's positioned right now. I know because we have one in the building that I enter to go to work every day, which is not this building. And it's off to the side and you can just stand there and get your temperature taken. The dividers are down. I haven't seen any, I guess the treasurer has them in his area for the clerks.
I've extended mine higher than normal.
Normal, but it was a normal operating desk
Yes, sir.
thing anyway. I don't think that's in you got on anybody. Those are the only dividers that I've seen up in the building today. And I've been downstairs and in the Al's office area. And then the sign in, from a public safety perspective, is simply an accountability piece at this point. Based on my understanding of what we've had conversations is, how do we account for people in the building during an emergency evacuation? And are we going to risk public responders having to go in and clear the building anyway? Or are we accepting that's got to be done no matter what? So as we try to gain accountability of people outside the building. So that's that's the only purpose that would serve at this point for assigning. Did I did I capture that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, I'd resend my motion from before to move the government out because this is too good doing this here now. So Debbie, can you take my motion off the floor, please?
I'll withdraw my second.
Go to the air now.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, Mr. O'Brien. So we got that one off. Dana, is it is your motion then to just to clarify the motion, separate the the temperature check or the thermal scan to be optional, to be re to be made such with signage and or repositioning?
Who made that motion to make it optional? I missed that as well.
Well, he wanted to remove it altogether, but now we through the conversation, are we accepting the fact that it's going to be an an optional tool? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get to is a is a what's the motion in front of us right now? Dividers are down. I don't know if we can put that in the motion if you want. And the sign in, we can take down, but there was a conversation about whether or not that is something more towards accountability of people in the building, not necessarily for COVID, but for, say, an evacuation of building due to a bomb threat or a fire alarm.
If you do the sign in, or if you you're actually Dana's was to remove all the these certain protocols that were set up for the because of the COVID. Now you want to leave the sign in sheet for safety, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, now you're setting a policy because there's nothing driving that other than policy. Now, policy does go to government. It obviously has to be voted on by the full board. So either you remove it and recommend that it become a policy, or you don't remove it. That's the way I'm looking at it from the perspective of government. Now, I mean, myself personally, I don't I don't see a need for sign in, but if you're if you're headed that way, let's do it right.
All right, so let's let's have a conversation then on the motion for Dana. Your your motion still stands, right? COVID requirements for for thermal scan, dividers, and sign in sheets are no longer valid?
Yes, because the sign in sheets we have now are for COVID reasons. If we want to have sign in sheets, you have to have sign out sheets. Nobody signs out now. And so you have to have, because the firefighters have to know if you're no longer in the building, you have to have sign out. That's a completely different sheet. And if public safety wants to have a policy for that for safety, public safety reasons that related to COVID, then that's another conversation you can have. But it shouldn't be that COVID now grows into something else. So I would like to see the COVID sign in sheets do away with, and then if you want to bring in sign in sheets for some other reason, So I would like to see the COVID sign-in sheets do away with, and then if you want to bring in sign-in sheets for some other reason, that's a different subject.
Hicks?
I'm actually ignorant of the issue. Are the sign-in sheets for everybody coming in the building or not employees only?
They're for everybody.
Okay, so we can make it for, we can make the sign-in sheets for not employees. And so employees would just sign out.
The sign-in sheets, the sign-in sheets are only for the thermo scan. It tells you, did you pass or fail? That's all it is. If you don't go through the, the scanner, you don't even see the sheet.
Contact, right. Yep. Melissa?
Um, so the whole reason that we have the sign-in sheets, it wasn't so much for the public safety aspect of it. It really was, um, for the health aspect. So it was that temperature control, um, whether or not they passed or failed. So if your concern is that we remove the COVID protocol, um, I would, I see no issue with you removing the sign-in sheets because it was for the purpose of just the, the temperature control and are you sick kind of thing. Um, I think what probably might be in our best interest is to bring back, um, maybe some recommendations as discussed with public safety, um, as far as safety, and maybe we want to have a sign-in sheet in the future, and maybe that's something we could discuss, um, at length in the future. But maybe right now, remove the sign-in sheets, um, temperature scans, if you like us to leave them there. I don't know, you know, what the purpose will be, if, for them to be optional, if anyone will use them. Um, I have some concerns with the entrance at Building B, only because there's not a lot of space there, and we seem to really be clogging it up recently. Um, so I wouldn't mind, you know, removing that, and if we need them, we can bring them back out. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have a couple of departments. Um, Stephanie, county clerk, is going to check to see what her, um, mandates are and whether or not they really need those dividers or temperature checks. I know public health also follows, um, it's a different protocol. I believe they still need to screen. Um, and of course, the courts, they follow their own rules as well. But as far as the majority, um, of the employees and, and the public that we serve, uh, I could certainly, you know, move ahead and do that if that's what you wish to do.
All right, um, Mr. Half, uh, so I think, uh, well, let me go, let me go to Sue. Go, go ahead, please.
I think, I think Melissa made a good point. Um, right now, our, our, um, rate, our Washington County rate is at low. And let's hope it stays there forever. That would be great. Um, but if it should go back up to red and hospitalizations increase, um, you know, hopefully we would rethink about what we're doing as far as temperature and mask and flexi glass. Um, hopefully we never have to do this. Hopefully it can all go away and we don't ever have to do this again. But I don't want to not have that conversation, that it's going away, never to come back. Let's hope it doesn't, but it could come back. If that does, you know, it's almost like we have been given the tools to keep ourselves safe with masks, with temperature checks, with just overall, um, social distancing. Um, thankfully, everyone here at the county has done a good job to get us to the point where we are today, and I'm very thankful for that. Um, in my opinion, I am at a point where I think it's low, and I think having the plexiglass on, creating a space in the sun of Building B without the sign-in sheet, without the thermo scan at this point, makes sense. But don't put it too far away in case we need it again. Concern I have is the corridor going down to the court system, because that's a different set of ballgame. It's a different ballgame. Going down to the DMV, that's a different ballgame. Going over to Burgoyne with public health, that's another ballgame. I heard from the jail this morning with Sheriff Murphy, he's under another set of guidelines. So that signage is going to be important because people do go from DSS over to court systems. They're downstairs. I mean, there is travel within the, um, the county, um, grounds. So how that would be managed? Um, Melissa, goes back to you, right? Now, that management of different locations are going to have different rules.
Yes, and I can confirm that with those areas, um, you know, to keep those going if they're mandated. And if you wish, I can, um, move ahead with, um, I guess, removing the temperature checks and, um, all the other precautionary, I guess, measures that are being taken right now. Um, as far as, you know, reducing the number of people in rooms. And I, I know that's why the department heads really initially weren't reporting to the committees, was just to kind of thin out, uh, the population in the room. Um, if you'd like me to, you know, get that information out there, to have them report to, uh, committee in person, if it's actually their committee, I can do that as well.
Okay, um, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I think, you know, I, I think, uh, I'd like to see a lot of things done, but I don't think we should, I think if you leave it to the department heads, if they feel they have a situation where they require either dividers or whatever, that they still can do those things. I would like to remind that employees have to, have to check in and cross, uh, are we, have to sign in, sign out. Uh, staff employees are encouraged to at least punch in once a day so we know they're in the building.
Fire.
Required punching. I wasn't sure if required it or not. So there is ways to track employees. There's not ways to track, um, other visitors in, in, into the building. So I think at a certain point, we need to address that also.
Right.
We're not aggressive, but I'd like to see Dana's motion, uh, passed and just make it discretionary to department heads, just so we're not over managing them.
That's not part of my motion.
So your motion remains writ large across the county building and not just entrance B?
Yes, it's layers of an onion. If there's a, a court that has a mandate from a state, then they say the state requires us. They can't say the county requires us. So I don't want to have anywhere in the building where the county requires dividers, thermo scans, and I don't think it should be up to different department heads to run their departments differently, unless they are mandated by a higher authority, the state, the feds, the courts, whatever. You can't have chaos and have all these different departments running however they want.
All right, from a public safety perspective, though, I think to your, to your point, Dana, that you just mentioned, as you clarified it, they're going to operate, department heads are going to operate under a higher authority by which they receive guidance and how they administer to the public. So you, again? Yeah, DSS, uh, there's, there's all kinds of department heads. We can, we can go ahead and, 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 and vote on this right now. It may not fundamentally physically change what you see when you walk into that department tomorrow, other than entrance B.
So. There's someone applying exactly what the motion is.
Yeah, going back to.
Well, I don't think you've got a second. You had a, a kind of a first, well, second to Matt's thing, but I don't think.
So Darryl's trying to simplify it down, that he, that he can, I think he's pretty close.
Yeah, so, so the.
I think when Dana started, he said any procedure through a state of emergency wanted to eliminate.
Yeah.
That's where he started, and then Dan mentioned Zoom. And then they went, I've got the plexiglass eliminated.
Okay.
So I don't.
You're not sure? All right, so.
I don't want it at times.
Yeah, no, I, I think, well, from this committee's perspective, we're not going to take on the Zoom stuff. We're, we're gonna.
Right.
That's a public, you know, that's something different from a public safety perspective. Um, I'd like to scope it, um, a little, little bit closer.
Why, why not include Zoom meetings as well?
Well, that.
We didn't do Zoom meetings prior to COVID.
Well, that's. That's open meeting law right now. That's, that's, I'll say that's beyond the scope of this committee.
Territory. No, we didn't start going to Zoom meetings until COVID. We can't do it, but still, we're doing it.
Well, like Roger had stated, I guess it was allowed under open meetings, but we had never done it. We didn't have the capacity.
Yeah, it was a COVID thing we created. So let's, we'll have Zoom meetings as well. Legitimately, you can know it's legal.
Yeah.
We didn't have.
Get rid of it ourselves.
Yeah, we didn't have the laptops and everything set up. We didn't know how to do Zoom.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr.
Um, I want to kind of just summarize what everybody says is an ingredient. I mean, I agree with everybody. Zoom, it, it was allowed because the state said it was allowable. It was our choice whether we entered into it or not. We chose to enter into it. We can enter out anytime, regardless if the state says it's optional or not optional. So that's the simplest way of saying it, right?
Well, I mean, I'd like to confirm that, you know?
Well, because they didn't make it mandatory. The state just said it was allowable.
And when you get rid of Zoom, in our case, you get rid of live stream.
Right.
So your public's not going to see it either.
But they're allowed up here.
Yes, they are.
They're, and so we have an open meeting by allowing them up here. It's like pre-COVID. With, and Dana, that's why he didn't want to go that far because he didn't want to lose Zoom. And I respect his opinion on that, although I don't agree with it.
Darryl, can I amend my motion to make clarity out of all of this because we've me, meandered all around?
Please.
This will help, this will help Debbie. Because originally I said all COVID things, but then I mentioned, we don't even know what they are. Maybe Melissa can come up with a list for us in the future. So my motion that I would like to amend it to is removal of the county requirement, Washington County requirement, that there be plexiglass dividers, one. Two, county requirement that you must go in front of the thermo scan. Two, county requirement that you have the sign-in sheets that accompanies the thermo scan. That's, that's it. If anybody wants to do motions about Zoom and department heads coming to the meeting, those can be other motions that they can sponsor.
So you're looking for, you're actually looking for a second on that motion, because I don't believe there ever was one.
I don't think, yeah, it's, I don't, to make it, to make it more clear, that's my amended motion, if somebody wants to second that.
Thank you, Dana. Do, uh, do I have a second on that motion?
Of course, I have a second on that one. Of course.
Mr. Hicks.
You have to make a conclusion at, at someone here.
Yep. Mr. Hicks is seconding that motion. We've had lots of discussion. Further discussion on that motion. All right. All those in favor? Ayes? Opposed? You need a discussion?
With three ayes?
No, no. I didn't hear a no.
You gotta vote now. You need, oh, okay.
I can't vote. I'm not, you look.
I'm, I'm back to Chairman, uh, Sue.
Um, I, I'm, um.
Are we, do we, wait, we're in a vote. How can you have a discussion during a vote, or are we finished with the vote?
Could I, could I suggest we do a roll call of the committee members on that motion, and that'll just lend clarity to everything we do?
Yeah, so we. Hold, hold on, before we go to vote, then a committee member wants to have a conversation going. Sue?
So by saying county, does that take away, um, are we micromanaging our department heads?
No, it's just overall county requirement. If a department has within their, within their department, they want, yeah, that's a different issue.
Just to clarify the distinction between the two motions. The first motion was we want every COVID-related restriction removed. But then when we found out it's negatively impacted supervisors, we adjusted that motion.
I don't think there was ever a first motion. There was never a first motion, because it never got a second. That was a, that was a wide-ranging discussion of an agenda item, but there was never a second to Mr. Half's initial foray, shall we call it. So what you have now is an official itemized motion.
Everything pre-COVID, we want it gone. We want, we want to go back to what it was like pre-COVID. But when we realized, hey, that's negatively impacted supervisors, that's when the motion was out to do. We, everything thought the thing's negatively impacted supervisors. Did I hear it correctly? You're saying that's the factor. It could be a factor. I'm not sure. Okay, I'm pretty sure. I'm pretty sure it was.
So do we have a, a real motion on the table?
Yes, we do. You, you actually stepped out. The motion is that the county requirement for thermo scanning for sign-in sheets related to COVID and for dividers be removed. That's the current motion.
Okay, you support. Well, I'm going to support it. I have a discussion going on. Okay.
Are we ready to go to vote? Are we ready to go to vote? We're going to do a roll call vote on this one, so we have clarity. We're, Deb.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Half?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
The Rottella's half, one, two, three. I guess one, no, and one yes.
Darryl, I'd like to make a motion if we resume all in-person meetings for county supervisors as well.
I'm not so sure. I tend to scope in this committee, but I would say that's more government ops and/or the full board.
Always.
We got a call for a second before we discuss that. I would like to, with that, bird may further. Roger, go back to in-person meeting on the county board.
Right, yeah, that's a sticky one for me.
Mr. Chris is going to tell us we can have discussion without a second. Is that true?
Well, I'm going to also tell you about open meetings and Zoom and all that good stuff, too, I hope. But yes.
I don't think, I don't think Roger can have discussion because there was no second. Roger, you're not allowed for discussion. Somebody has, somebody has to second the motion.
We have a second for discussion.
All right, two seconds for discussion.
Actually, you don't need a motion to discuss items that are on the agenda, and I think building access is on the agenda, but regardless. Remote attendance at meetings is at the choice of the member of the body. So in other words, it's at the choice of the supervisor, individual supervisor. It has always been a choice of an individual supervisor to attend a meeting remotely. And if they made that choice pre-COVID, it was up to the board to make arrangements for that to happen. The difference between pre-COVID and post-COVID is that they removed the requirement that you post, you post in the meeting notice that Supervisor X will be attending remotely. And also that Supervisor X, you had to notify the public in that notice that Supervisor X was attending at Y location and Y lo, other members of the public could attend at Y location.
I like that.
The, the second issue is the open meetings law was amended to allow simply having meetings by Zoom and live stream and allowed you to exclude the public. So if we're at, at your choice, so if we were to rewind the clock back to, uh, pre-CO, and pre-COVID times, any member of this body that wanted to attend remotely, like some of you are now, would notify Debbie ahead of time, I'm going to be remote, this is where I'm going to be. Debbie would put that in the notice, Supervisor X will be attending remotely from Y location. It would go out with a notice. There is talk that has nothing to do with whether or not people come into our meetings in the building, okay? Has nothing to do with live streaming. That's a choice you guys have. Open meetings law only requires live streaming when you're excluding members of the public. If there is talk, there is talk about removing that location requirement from the open meetings law. In other words, you would no longer have to say, I'm attending remotely from this location. And oh, by the way, you can also come to this location public and, and watch the meeting there. That has not happened yet. The legislation hasn't changed. The, I believe, are extended through, the, um, exemptions are extended through mid-March. At some point, if there isn't some kind of change, we're going to go back to, if you want to attend remotely, you have to notify the clerk. She has to pu, publish the fact that you'll be attending remotely, and she has to publish your location, and you have to allow people at that, to come to that location to watch the meeting. So we got a couple of different things going on here. One is live stream. The only time you have to live stream is if you're excluding the public. If you're not excluding the public and they can come back in, you don't have to live stream. You can if you want to. Remote attendance is at the option of the individual supervisor to, to go through the correct process to notify the clerk that you'll be attending remotely.
Roger, what's the timeframe on that? Roger, what's the timeframe on the notifying the clerk?
Well, the notice, yeah, the notice.
That you're going to attend remotely.
I think it's five days. I think Debbie, Debbie's more familiar with the notice requirements, but I think you have to notice the meeting five days ahead of time.
Well, if it's after five days, let's say it's four days, you say you notify the clerk you're going to attend remotely, then you can't ask the clerk to do that or you missed the vote or what?
I don't think you missed the vote, but you know, if you, it's one of those things where you have to, have to provide as much notice as is practicable, just like with an emergency meeting, Dan. So we'd really prefer you didn't wake up that morning and go, eh, I don't want to go in. I think I'll attend remotely, right? So as soon as you knew you were going to attend remotely, like you're on vacation or something, you should notify the clerk to do that. There's not really a lot of, um, case law on that because it, I mean, the original law was talking about phone conferencing. You know, and then they went to, it has to be two-way sight and sound, um, if you're going to vote. So COVID has vastly outstripped the process, but that is the process. So I don't think this board can require supervisors to attend meetings, I guess is where I'm coming from here. You can highly encourage it. You can do all those kinds of things, but if a, a member of the board wants to attend remotely and complies with the rules for doing that, they can do that.
Okay, Roger. So the steps to go back to the notification required by supervisor to let us know where they're going to be logging in and make that a public venue. What do we have to do to get to that point?
That, that, that requirement has been suspended by the state under the open meetings law. So when that, if it's re-instituted, there's nothing you would have to do. It would just be re-instituted and that would be the requirement.
We do that locally.
I don't think you can require the, I don't think you can impose more, more onerous conditions on a member of the board because they have to comply with the law. And the law right now is you can attend remotely. And there's no requirement for that public, um, notice provision. And I suspect that if anything changes, it's going to be that because that's always been the problem. You're on vacation in Miami Beach. And, uh, you know, is the public really going to come? No. Does the public really need to know where you're staying? That's been the, that's been the, or you're attending from home, you know, and do you want the public traipsing over to your house to, to watch? I think you're going to see a combination of an elimination of that, that along with, um, if you live stream, you'll be, you'll be able to say, there's the public access. Cause the concern has always been, where can the public go to see the meeting? Cause remember they're allowed to watch. They're not, there's no requirement to let the public comment at meetings unless it's a public hearing, but they're, they have to be able to observe. I think what you're going to see is a combination of increasing their, their options to observe while removing that requirement that you announce where you are.
Matt, two points, number one, I think it's a clarification that Roger's covering by Roger. If I don't give you notice, I give you one day's notice and I log on, I can still attend the meeting. I just can't vote in that meeting after this has changed, correct? I can still attend. I just can't vote. I could attend by phone three years ago. I just couldn't vote by phone.
Right, you had that sight and sound, right?
And that, and I 100% support the intent of Mr. Hogan's motion. A hundred percent. I support that. And I think I would probably match my attendance here over the COVID two years up to anybody's except for Dave who basically lives here. So what I have to say is I don't milk cows in Cambridge and I don't look at IP in Tottenham. So it's easy for me to say it. I think it provides an opportunity for some, certain supervisors to attend that couldn't otherwise. And it, it would, it has to be a hard thing for me to impose on certain supervisor. But I see your point and I believe your intent. I'd love to have a conversation. Because there's supervisors who want to go back to how it was before COVID. And they all want to go back to how it was before.
I'm with you.
Yet they don't want to sacrifice and come to the meeting in person. That's all I brought that up for. I'm going to, the valid discussion, man.
We have to consider one other thing that I want to reference Matt on this is how about the people that work here and live in Tottenham or Cambridge? Now.
They gotta come to work every day. They have to come to work in eight, seven, eight hour shift, right? You're going to make Daryl drive down here 45 to 50 minutes for maybe a 20 minute meeting to drive back. It costs him a half a day for 20 minutes. He could zoom in. He may not even be on that committee, but now he'll know what's going on because he zooms in. I think that has some effect of governance. Well, same thing for Kathy.
Yeah.
I respect your opinion. I don't agree with it. Okay. We can live with that.
Uh, Tim, go ahead.
I'm making a point to be at my meetings that I'm on committees on. When I'm not on committees, I appreciate being able to log in. And if it's not Zoom, I, I would appreciate still be able to watch on YouTube. So I, I, when I'm not on a committee, I'm not there. But when I'm on the committee or I'm in the chair, I'm there. So I think it's that simple.
Sue.
Um, I think through this case, you know, through the last couple of years, sometimes you make lemonade out of lemon. And I think one of the, the positives is then, uh, live streaming for the public to be able to queue in just like we do. And, um, now I agree with Jim and Matt, you know, I prefer to be here if I'm on a, that committee. I prefer to be in person and I've been doing that as best I can. But I also appreciate the fact that if something comes up and you're in Tottenham, or Salem, or White Creek, or Cambridge, or the Hudson Falls. If you go to Utah, it's nice to be able to join in. Those are those lemonades that we got out of a tough situation. And I think that as we're coming out as a country, we're going to see change anyways. I think they're going to have a post-COVID change that probably will come down through the federal and state. It's just that we're kind of dumping the gun a little bit because we're ready to.
Dan.
Um, none of this, none of this, none of this discussion has anything to do with my motion.
Your, your motion's over. I made it.
I thought, I thought discussion was to discuss the motion, not something else.
Your motion passed?
No, you'd know because I thought.
Didn't Roger, didn't Roger want a roll call? No, if I could, no, no, hold on. The motion in front of the, the motion in front of the committee right now is to remove Zoom.
Did it pass?
Wait, there was no second to the Zoom motion. No, Sue, Sue seconded for the sake of procedure so we can have a discussion.
Virgil doesn't work. Neither do you.
I can, it's really, how we happen to do that. We had our discussion. I want to have a discussion.
She, Sue wanted to have a discussion, so she's withdrawing her second from the motion.
Oh, just when I was going to discuss something on.
We have no motion on the floor. I have a motion.
To Jared?
You got a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Dana, go ahead. Dana Half.
My motion, as Roger said, was the easiest thing we did all day. What committee are you going to kick the can of this for? This is the Washington County Emergency Closure Plan of March 17th, 2020. I want to discuss this because I think that this thing is still alive somewhere. And do we have, was there ever a motion to adopt this? Washington County Emergency Closure Plan? Cause if you read it, it's so outdated. It's not funny. Do we have to have a motion to rescind this? Or do we never have a motion to adopt this in the first place?
I don't believe there's a motion to adopt it. I think it went under the chairman's, uh, authority under the, um, state of emergency.
See, I would like this thing to be rewritten because it's very outdated, put on a shelf, dust it off, and if we ever need it again, we would have a resolution to, to use it. I don't like something that's out there living that was never adopted by resolution because this thing was quite encompassing. It gave unelected people 100% power.
Sam should appoint Dana Half to chair that committee to redo that closure plan.
I'll do that because we will rescind it.
That was quick.
All right, well. Say again?
I should, we should have a closure plan just in case something happens in the future. So we don't have to repeat things over and over again.
Right, that's an emergency plan.
So that should be kicked, government office for action.
Say that because Kathy's up here.
That's right.
Yeah. Dana, would you be all right going into government ops on that one?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion for the committee?
We have a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye, adjourned. Thank you.